All right, good evening, folks. We're here on the August 5th of 2025 Finance and Facilities Committee meeting. President is Jen White, myself, online is Jay Whitelau. Not sure if our esteemed Board Chair will be joining us tonight, but she, of course, she is welcome. We also have, of course, the super with us, Director of Finance Rita and Director of Facilities Anne. So, first item of business is call to order. Look at that, I just did it. Next item of business is review of the meeting of a couple of weeks ago. Any comments? Changes, proposals, thoughts, musings? Jay, anything?
No, I don't have anything to add, thank you.
Very well. So, I mean, normally I would entertain a motion, but I was told at one point that we don't do that. So, I suppose if we had to, we could approve a whole series of edits later on. You must ratify them. All right. Next item, number three, Director of Finance report to include a review of out-of-district tuition rates. So, I guess first things first, quickie, now that it's August, whatever.
How are you doing?
Yeah, how does it look like we did last fiscal year?
So, we're still...
In black?
Yes, and we're still closing grants and working hard to meet the middle of the month deadline to start entering all of the expenditures into EFS. That report for the state is due September 2nd, day after Labor Day, I believe.
Right.
Right? So, that report determines what the pure pupil cost is. I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with it, you know, it's an expenditure report, all the expenses that we have in Grattan, so that's why I have to meet the deadline.
Right.
So, hopefully, like I said, relative, you know, I guess, I should know some clearer numbers. The grants are going well. I've met with the team today, the DoDIA team, and to understand those grants. I think you do miss grants Title I and all those, I already have background and knowledge to be able to close those down. We do have, we're hiring new staff because we have retirement. This happened last week, right? It was the last week. But, so, we'll be hiring new staff, hopefully, in a week or so. So, training and trying to move the numbers.
So, as far as the tuition rates go, we know that those were based on...
So, these are based on FY '24.
Okay.
Because that's the last numbers you can get in the EFS.
So, literally, so we're not basing it on fiscal year ending '25?
No, because that's not audited, it's not entered. It doesn't get entered till September 1st, and the audit is due by December 31st of those records.
So, the numbers we see here...
So, the numbers I come up with, yes, are based on the EFS numbers.
Okay.
From the year before. That's always the case.
It's always, you're always two years behind.
Okay. I probably knew that at one point and just didn't remember it.
And I think you had used LEARN numbers to...
Yes, or in the bottom, the LEARN, the additional services are based on LEARN. So, if you look at the top, pre-K, elementary, those tuition rates are based on the EFS, and the bottom, based on LEARN. And I worked with Denise to come up with these numbers. These ones in the middle are self-contained, you know, are programs, and those are based on the staffing in those programs. So, the teachers, pairs, and what they earn.
Okay.
Okay?
So, in effect, these numbers are kind of out of our hands, they are what they are. They're not discretionary.
Yes, it's based on, the ones in the middle are based on FY '26, you know, what we're going to pay our staff, and for how many hours, and that type of thing. So, yeah, it's just data that I collected to come up with these numbers from different sources.
And pre-K is different this year because, remember, pre-K is going to a full-day program. And, right now, we have two at Mystic River, and, wait, do we have two at Mystic River? Or one at Mystic River? And two at Thames River? And then, it looks like we're going to be able to have one at Northeast Academy because of the low numbers in their kindergarten, and we have room, you know, should they get more kindergartners in all of a sudden. So, probably four.
And I just wanted to let everybody know that the EFS numbers can fluctuate year to year depending on the grants you receive as well. So, when, in '24, if you were receiving extra grants and stuff, it will increase your pure pupil cost because you're expending that money as well, you know, along with the general fund money.
Do you know why middle school is like 19,000? I mean, it's sort of, you see it, 19,470?
Yeah, it's like a 40% jump.
Yeah, and it's, I could see if it were 17, so it would be sort of like in line with high school and middle. It's not only a jump from year to year, but then it's like higher than its elementary and high school.
Well, you could say the same thing about high school, it's very different from middle school. You know, why should middle school be less than high school in the '24, '25?
Do you think any grants that are geared to middle school? I can look into that number.
Yeah, I think we should look into it.
Let me look into it.
Okay.
Does that pull out the EFS and then for last year anyway?
Yep.
Start narrowing, you know, what we filed last year.
Because it's a title school, do we, we do get additional title funds. I don't know if that might make a difference in the high school.
Every grant that we get is figured into that number.
So, you know, it's a good question that, Jen, I think we should find out before we share, base it to the whole board.
Exactly. And then, the special ed self-contained, like at 11,190, like, just us talking about, like, the, basically, the one-on-one support, I feel like 11,000 is like a bargain because we don't, like, a parent doesn't make 11,000 in nine months, or, you know, so, I don't even know for recouping.
So, I know that one, the calculation that me and Denise looked at had a lot of pairs in that self-contained classroom, that she told me to lower the pairs because there weren't that many pairs in that. I believe it went from 10 to 2.
So, ABA and multiple disabilities are also self-contained programs, Jen? The self-contained is only really the academy for behavioral needs and transition academy, which is up here. And, but the ABA and the multiple disabilities absolutely have more one-to-one pairs with those children?
Yeah.
Not all of them, but most of them, where the self-contained academy program has more shared para resources.
Okay.
Just because of the nature of their needs, the ABA and multidisciplinary disabled, those are more medical, medically fragile as well. So, I just think there's probably more pairs, but we can look at that one, too, just to make sure we've got it as accurate as possible.
Yeah, because I don't want it to be low, then we suddenly get an influx of new students because it's like a bargain within, like, southeast Connecticut, right?
And realize that we only take in additional students based on our capacity to take in.
Okay.
Now, if we've really got full classrooms, like, the ABA program is really full, like, it probably would not be a place that we could add extra kids at this time. So, we are very cognizant that enrollment matters and our own Grattan students come first.
And I would think that this number could change if we needed a one-to-one para, you know, because we would have to factor, this can't be constant with the, with the ratio we have. It can be constant, but if we add too many students, tuition's going to...
Well, and you see that in the additional services way at the bottom where it says para-professional.
Right.
So, if a child did need a one-to-one, that we would have to charge them for the para-professional, additional para-professional.
Right.
Yeah.
Jay, you've got it, your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to, no, I don't know if we have any way to project this, but if anybody's watching or will be watching the replay at a future date, if you go to grattanschools.org about us Board of Ed meetings, agendas, these documents are embedded in the agenda and can be viewed there, if somebody's interested in these specific numbers that we're talking about. I wonder if it might even help if, if we could put a notice at the bottom of the meetings, you know, how to, how to access the agendas and the supporting documents, you know, as a little text message at the bottom?
Very good suggestion, how to access.
Always white space down there, so...
Right, so, anyway.
I don't know if Mark will put it up because he does get the agenda. I don't, asking the question out loud, if you think that would be necessary, we could ask.
Yeah, if we can't get it up for this, at least for the next, and, and once people know that they can access it online and study it. So, that's all, I'm not going to get into the details about how all these are determined, though I do wonder if we couldn't, even though we only have data back to '24, whether we could, you know, apply a reasonable increase to capture, you know, the increase in cost in the past two years? And furthermore, of course, all of these, if, if there is room in the program and we can accept someone from out of town, all of that tuition would go directly to the town, am I correct?
It, it had been, but I don't know that in the future it would. I think that some of the things that were happening was when we either rented space or there were funds that were supposed to come to the school, I think we've been able to see more of that happening at the, you know, especially this spring. So, I can have a conversation with John Burton about that.
My experience, my experience has been that the regular tuition goes to the town because it's part of the ECF, but special ed tuition is extra cost for the district, so it should come directly to the Board of Ed.
So, we can, we'll have that conversation.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, Rita, and maybe we can get that in some kind of MOU. Thank you.
Just saying. All right, any other questions?
I just want to say thank you to Rita, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Because she's really pulling together a brand-new team. We've had several retirements and several resignations, and she's got really some talented people learning new jobs, and she's cross-training them at the same time, you know, knowing, you know, we've been very honest with her about some of the challenges we've all faced, and, you know, she's really ready to pull everybody together and doing a really fine job. But this is a big time of year where we're closing out a year, we've got auditors already ringing the doorbell, and we have the town reviewer trying to finalize his plan, so there's a lot of moving pieces, but she's handled it very well, so I'm so pleased to have her on board with us.
So, no calm before the storm, right?
Well, a little bit, yeah, a little bit.
Like Halloween.
Summertime.
Sometimes it's good to form your own team, too.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Yeah.
We've talked a lot about it, yeah. Part of it is excitement of building it and...
And getting skill sets that are more, yeah, yeah.
Very well.
Oh, there we go, thank you, Mark.
Now that we move on to the next one.
For those who are watching, you want to see the documentation, especially, you know, for those who may be watching later on even. But you can see the setup with the general ed cost and then the special ed costs.
And I'll review the numbers to make sure that they make sense and find out why the middle school jumped.
Again, for the record, there's very little, if any, discretion in here on the part of the administration in setting these rates. This is all math, as you said.
Right.
Okay.
Exactly.
And did we do the 85% of the per pupil spending?
Yes, that's why I want to double-check the middle school because it does seem high to me, too. I just want to make sure the math is right behind me.
That's why we have this finance committee, they help us with their eagle eyes.
Not sure about that.
Why?
Pigeon eyes, huh? All right, thank you, Rita. Any other, any questions for Rita before we let her go? You can stay if you like, but...
I have stuff to do.
Everybody's messed up.
All right, Sam and I have it from here.
Why did I call him Ken?
I don't know, did you?
Yes, you did, you did call him Ken. I just didn't want to...
Yes.
Poor Barbie.
Why did I do that?
It's a block from the back.
And he said nothing.
I didn't say anything.
I didn't hear.
I heard it, but I wasn't there to say anything.
Good night.
Bye, Rita.
Good night.
Well, Sam, that's your real name. What do you have to say to yourself?
Well, everybody has a copy of these adjusted rates.
I'm going to ask Mark once again if you don't mind putting up the Director of Building and Grounds reviewing of facility use rate. There you go, maybe a little bigger.
A lot bigger.
There you go, that's great. From the top, there you go.
So, I, I did not develop these numbers, somebody else developed these numbers. I think it came out of the business office, they looked at other area, other school systems in the area.
Grab Rita.
Looked at what we charged in the past. I've reviewed it, it seems, it seemed reasonable and appropriate, the use of those spaces or buildings, fields, et cetera.
And these, the numbers that we had in the past, which you can see on the other sheet, which we'll bring up to show you in a minute, but they were done back in 2015 originally, and then 2018, when Ken was here.
The other Ken.
The other Ken. And, so, they definitely needed to be adjusted, and looking around at other districts was really the best way that we were able to see. And then, knowing our own price for police and security and kitchen staff that went into that. And those, those costs, whether you're a nonprofit or a profit, are really necessary. Now, if you are in the school district, and I think even sometime Parks and Recs will get to have, you know, a better fee or no fee in-kind services at times, so, but we do have to pay for our police, security, kitchen staff, even our custodians, and when they work into the evenings for different events, so, and IT. So, Clint was looking for that and was happy to see that because that is necessary as well at times.
Well, since we sent it forward, I was okay with rates that we sent forward. I, the only thing they said was for the non-for-profit, if I made it like a 5% discount, but I, I wouldn't go half or anything because we still have fees.
Mark, I'm going to ask you to put up that next one, I don't know if it was on the same page, or it looks like attachment three, yeah, there you go, it's just added. So, then you can see the red line where we used to have profit, and I can't even read this with my...
Cheaters.
But it looks like nonprofit and profit seem to have the same price. I don't know if that was, that was Xed out, which is kind of unusual.
Yeah, I don't think that's correct.
Okay.
Nonprofits weren't charged for some of the usages, and that's one of the reasons that I asked to have a policy take a look at that, in particular because I know of programs that use our space and which, of course, needs to be taken care of, cleaned up, maybe soil added or fill added to a field, et cetera, those sorts of things, relining, all of those things cost money. And if a nonprofit gets it for free, then, then we pick up the tab, which I don't think is fair to us, especially when the nonprofit is charging kids to participate, and they charge plenty of money for a lot of these programs.
And sometimes they're even...
If they were charging the kids, I'd have a different, I'd have a different thought about it. But they're also not only charging the kids, but they're using the fields or spaces at no cost and charging the kids and paying coaches to do it, so...
Right, so, there is that.
Is that...
We're the only charity.
Yes.
Right. So, it's, the nonprofit is not a charity, it's still a money-making operation, well, somebody's making money, huh?
Right.
How do we determine whether an outfit is not-for-profit?
You have to hand the paperwork into...
501(c)(3) or the equivalent?
Yep, with their application.
Now, I know with some Little League organization, Town Little Leagues, the coaches are volunteers, but there are situations where travel teams pay their coaches well, and they are bringing in money. So, I, it's hard to, I, I don't know the legal language or, you know, what you'd have to show to be really truly a nonprofit.
Yeah.
Because I think they can get different eligibility, even if they are paying coaches and bringing in lots of money.
We see not-for-profit, and by 501(c)(3), if they have some designation, an IRS designation of some sort, really an Internal Revenue Code designation, that's not necessarily not-for-profit, that just means they have a tax-exempt status, which we colloquially call not-for-profit. And then, we also think of not-for-profit as charity, and again, that's not the same thing either. So, if we're going on the basis of, do you have the tax designation or don't you, and we're going to call it, quote, "not-for-profit," and they get a separate rate, then, yeah, I think you sweep in on organizations that are, as we say, more profitable than others.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, I, I've been on the boards of not-for-profits, the people that work for us, they get paid, regular salaries, benefits, people, people make money, it's not, you know, it's not a soup kitchen. Yeah, so, how do we, so how do we then differentiate, say, okay, fine, you've got a tax designation, but you're one of those, and so, we're going to charge you? Like Little League, for example, you're right, the coaches are, are volunteer.
Volunteer.
The umpires, on the other hand, are paid.
Paid.
There, there is a little kitty out of which the umpires are paid.
And you do pay something for Little League, but I don't think Little League uses our, I don't think Little League uses ours, because they use the one right next to the seaport and then the one next to the train station on South Road over there, Washington Park.
When there was Cutler Elementary, or Callahan, sorry, the field was used by Little League.
It was?
Yeah, if not for games, then at least for practice.
Okay.
When Fitch freshmen weren't using it, for example.
Okay.
The Mystic program uses Mystic River.
It does, okay.
And do we charge them?
No.
No. So, we already know that there are certain leagues, like Little League, that we are already providing the space for. Would that change under this policy?
I don't think so.
Unless you...
All of the committees got to look at it and decide what, you know.
Yeah, I know.
So, it's out of our hands, very well.
Well, no, that's why they kicked it back.
Yes, they wanted to make the decision.
The decision regarding, like, the fee.
I see Jay's hand.
Nonprofit, profit.
Jay, can you enlighten us?
Yeah, so, my concern about this is, you know, none of these buildings or, or grounds belong to us, they, they belong to the town, they were paid for by the town, and we use them for educational purposes. So, I feel strongly that anything that benefits the children or residents of the town that is not charging a fee for whatever it is they're doing should have a separate category. In the past, it might have said profit, nonprofit, maybe we have to create a new term to encompass, you know, groups that benefit residents and aren't charging fees, because I think, you know, we owe it to those groups, and it sounds like maybe we've already grandfathered something in any way, so, that's, that's what I'd like to see, that differentiation.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think, I can just stick to baseball, when I think of Little League, it's pretty volunteer all around.
Mm-hmm.
You know, parent, parental involvement, if there's any cost, it's somebody's got to pay for the uniforms and whatnot, upkeep of, like, Rossi Field, for example, there's some cost involved with that one. But there isn't anybody paid, except for umpires.
Umpires, yeah.
Yeah, but other than that. But I differentiate that from a program where we would call, you know, the, the travel teams, for example.
Yeah.
That's different. That's, that's like me going to a baseball coach and paying the baseball coach, that guy's making money, I want his services.
Yeah.
Even though I'm playing Little League or Babe Ruth or whatever, I want the services, that's different, so...
Yeah, the travel teams, like, and they charge anywhere between 1,000 to 3,000, like, if we're just talking baseball per child, you know, I, I don't even know if they're designated as a, a non-for-profit or if they're like a, you know, like an LLC or something, I'm not sure.
They would be tax-exempt, I suppose, whatever qualifies as tax-exempt. I guess your purposes and whether or not you distribute money to shareholders or interest holders.
Yeah, I have no idea, but all I know, it's, Little League is different, so maybe we treat like Little League, you know, Babe Ruth or whatever, different than like a travel league. And the comparable thing for soccer and lacrosse and all that, we just happen to be using baseball as an example.
Yeah, how do we come up, yeah, we use them because we know that best, how do we come up with a, you know, a coherent definition that makes the proper distinction? Is that our job tonight?
I don't think so.
Not to say that's a policy, but...
Yeah.
Because it's the, it should be, it is the policy of the board to make the distinction now, someone has to write the policy.
So, this is actually the regulation on 1330, maybe we have to look at the policy.
Policy, yeah.
There you go.
There you go. And then, the other reason they kicked it back...
And that would be to define profit, nonprofit.
Or whatever term.
Or, yeah.
Yeah.
We want a meaningful distinction among the groups.
And then, the second reason they kicked it back to us was because there was a $5,000 charge for the, the middle school turf field.
Oh, yeah.
I remember you talking about coconut shells way back when I first started, so, I know those are expensive, so, I don't know if that's the reason why.
Yeah, remind...
Do you know anything about that with the turf, why it would be so much more expensive?
Well, it's, a lot of my, coconut shell is very expensive, and you have to do it every couple of years, so...
So, it's literally planted with $5 bills. It's literally planted with $5 bills, like my neighbor's lawn.
And, I mean, we can, we can take a look again at other turf fields to see, just so that you know the range of turf fields in the area, just to see why that $5,000.
Okay, so, once again, Sam, who came up with the $5,000? It wasn't you. What you're, what you're saying is that that is, as far as you know, that is the cost, that's to cover the cost of our maintenance of that field.
I, I don't remember looking exactly at a $5,000 for a turf field, but a lot of these things are in line with some of the other school districts, I know. I was told that that's, whoever put this together had looked at other area systems.
Okay.
And, and tried to keep these in line with what other people were charging in the other districts.
Yeah, my hunch is that if we were to say, well, this is just exactly what you said, that whoever has a problem with it is not going to be satisfied, because it still jumps out, it's, you know, $5,000 for, you know, for up to eight hours, so it's eight hours or less. So, how do we find out the workings of how we got to the $5,000, only because it is, it does seem like an exceptional figure?
I'm going to check with the staff member who is most knowledgeable about field usage and, you know, who takes in all the requests and helps process them and see, you know, and find out, you know, why we came up with the $5,000.
Yeah, just make sure that it isn't, I mean, I know it's... Yeah, just make sure that it isn't, I mean, and I know it's unlikely, but it could be a misprint. You know, maybe it was supposed to be three or something.
And I like your idea of defining profit versus nonprofit because even some nonprofits profitable, more profitable than others.
And some for profit, some making money at all. Uh, yeah, so as a practical matter, yeah, we need, we need some other distinction so we can fairly tell people, you're being charged, you're not being charged, and here's why.
Mm-hmm.
And as I said, even with the whole board, I said, looking at that top component, these are costs that we're incurring, custodial, tech, police, security, kitchen staff. Even, you know, when we have events at our schools, so, but we pay them for our events, right?
Mm-hmm.
But beyond that, you know, um, Parks and Rec, they, we provide our custodian, right? When they're there to clean up in the evening for basketball and all kinds of sports and so. But then when you think about if there's someone who's profiting from that, you know, that is, we become the charity then, and taking on the cost.
It's a decline of profit, I suppose.
Neither Parks and Rec's department is charged for the use of our buildings. These don't apply to Parks and Rec, whether it's city or town.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the argument being, hey, they're town property. Why should the town pay for town property?
Well, there are kids and.
Yeah, exactly.
Programs for our kids.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, yeah, I mean, generally speaking, the program is set up so that it's used to charging the kids, paying coaches, paying, 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 and then, oh, by the way, we'd like to use your, your facilities for free. Well, that's nice. But why are we the only vendor who isn't charging anything, who doesn't charge anything?
Yeah.
You're already paying other vendors.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, right, I mean, there's going to be wear and tear. We're going to have people. We should at least become net neutral, you know, not in the hole trying to support, I don't know, whatever it may be.
Do we have information on, we must. It may not be all be in one place. So these are our rates, but in a given year, just exactly who is using our facility?
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm going to.
What is, what is the universe of users?
For instance, like there's a dance company that uses the auditorium a couple of times a year. And there are certainly some Grotton kids, and there's other kids, too, from other, you know, neighboring towns, and, um, parents pay to have their child take lessons and for the, you know, costumes and, um, and then that, those monies are used to support the staffing that the company has. But they've always, there's never been a complaint that they, they're happy to be able to use our high school auditorium.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know that we do charge for the custodians for the time because there is a lot of cleanup to that,
Mm-hmm.
that we would be paying overtime if we did not charge. So yes, they are Grotton kids and there's other kids, and it is a local organization, but I almost equate it to a travel team, too.
Mm-hmm.
It's almost like that, you know?
Yeah.
Where there is, you know, there's, they are not volunteers running it and, you know, charging families very little.
Because, yeah, the other thing, too, is just, you know, who's using, what's the, it's, I'm sure it's in the budget somewhere. What are we talking about in terms of charging and then getting reimbursed, getting paid? You know, we're talking about big money. It's the same thing with, uh, charging people for parking a, a car illegally on the street if it's not registered. You know, you get a ticket for that. Well, exactly how much does the town make from something like that, from that enforcement? Is it big money? Is it hundreds, thousands, tens of thousands of dollars? So what are we talking about here, so?
Well, the, you see, the prices are increasing, but they're not, you know, except for a certain, there's a certain few, like the $400 high school cafeteria has gone to 1,000 because it's really kind of equivalent space, I think, to the auditorium. You know, you can fit a lot of people in it.
You know, are we in the same position that, for example, Parks and Rec was in a number of years ago when they wondered whether some of their fees, some programs shouldn't be lower, some higher, to encourage participation or to take advantage of the fact that lots of people were signing up for karate or Italian cooking or something like that? I can remember there was a, nearly a vote to, to hire a consultant to figure that out. And I think it was Michael Burns, said, wait a minute, we have a whole Parks and Rec department. Let them figure out what fees to charge for karate and cooking and dance classes and that.
Yeah.
Rate some, lower others, see what happens. Are we kind of in the same position here where we, we've brought these things in the line locally? You know, this is more or less what everybody else is charging.
Right.
Should cover our costs more or less, but, um, should we be thinking about maybe encouraging the use? If the price of something was lower, maybe we'd get more use out of it. Maybe we don't want that use. You know, we don't, we don't want the wear and tear. It gets us into the business of being, of providing facilities for sale, you know?
Well, I know that we have, you know, a very busy custodial team already, so these extra overtime hours do, you know, cause some stressors. But, I mean, we're happy to do that with our local community, with our Parks and Rec, but I don't know that I would want to advertise it for others all around, you know? But I think for, like you said, for our kids and, um, and those organizations that help support our kids for these after-school events, it's good to have.
Position one, which is the neutral position, which is not, but the zero position, if you will, which is we don't allow the use of any facilities at all, just for school purposes, our school purposes, and that's it. That's our position. Second position is, yes, we'll allow the use, but we have to cover our costs, hence we're going to charge various fees for things, and that's it. We're not looking to actually make any money. The third position, of course, is, is there a way to make any money off of this? But I don't think we've ever come there.
I don't think that's been the intent at all.
Probably not advisable.
No, it's not the intent.
Net neutral's good.
Right.
I was curious. I thought, I thought I just sort of mentioned that.
And I, these are public buildings. They are community buildings, so they should be used, you know, by our families and our organizations. So we do believe in that.
I mean, sometimes on, on some days, I'm thinking, you know, we should take some money in our budget to go buy a McDonald's franchise. Think of what you could do with that, the training, the experience the kids would have, the profit that the district would make from running that restaurant.
I want one of those trucks, one of those, um, food trucks. Ernie, get a food truck, and he can have the kids learn, you know, money management and, you know, maybe even for the transition academy kids.
I wonder, are we precluded from doing something like that, from like buying a dunk of doughnuts or? I mean, I don't know. That's, it sounds crazy, and I'm sure we, you, you'd have to staff it, of course, but overall, the thing should pay for itself and then some, right?
Jay's signing off. Thank you, Jay.
Thanks, Jay. He doesn't want to hear any of this.
Good night. All right. So I've got some homework to do.
I guess we're.
I will find out more about some of these numbers and get it back to you. And Rita will help me with the other page, some of the tuition rates that are a little few. Thanks for bringing that up, Dan.
Somebody's, somebody's got their, there's something, somebody said something in chat, but I don't know who it is. I can't get to it, so.
Oh.
It's an attendee, but I don't know who it is.
Oh, there you go. Is it just Jay saying?
Jay's signing off.
Oh, thank you, Mark. I'm signing off now, okay. All right.
All right.
Very well. Um, without objection, I guess we're, we're turned.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, no objection.